Good morning. I'd like to call the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, November 12, 2019, to order. I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting. We'll begin our meeting this morning by asking Pastor Robert Bush, the pastor of Faith Baptist Church of Palatka, to come forward to give our invocation, and Commissioner Harvey will lead us in the pledge. Please stand if you're able.
Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to gather here today. Lord, we thank you for the freedom that we have in this country and that you put it in the hearts, Lord, of these men and women, Lord, to open this meeting in prayer. We come to you this morning, Lord, and we pray for wisdom, Lord, for the men and women who sit in leadership. Lord, we thank you, Lord, for appointing them to these positions, and we just pray, Lord, that you'd give them wisdom, soft hearts, and a yielded will. We pray, Lord, that in all things that you would be glorified and honored. We thank you, Lord, and pray that you bless this meeting, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, Pastor Bush, and thank you, Commissioner Harvey. First item of business, item two, approval of amendments to July 8, 2019, special budget workshop, meeting July 9, regular workshop September 24.
I'll move for approval.
Okay. We've got a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard and a proper second by Commissioner Harvey. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, and okay, but saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay. We can waste a minute to get to 9:05, then we can go to the Port Authority. Okay, I'd like to recess a regular Board of County Commission meeting, and I'd like to convene the Port Authority meeting. First item of business, item A, approval of the minutes of the July 9, 2000, regular Port Authority workshop.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we've got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey, proper second by Commissioner Goddard. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, and okay, saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, we'll open up the public comment portion of this meeting. Any individual wishing to speak on any items about the port, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment part of this meeting, and we'll open it up for general discussion. Commissioners, any items you was with to discuss today?
I have none, sir.
Okay. Can we get an update on the playground? Julianne here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Update for you, after the last meeting that we had, we have gone back and worked with the splash pad and the playground people. We are working together with both of those agencies to develop an overall site plan because they're going to have to fit together at some point. The playground entity is hopeful to have me some final numbers today by noon. We had to revise a little bit of the way our hybrid paths worked when we laid out the site plan with both the splash pad and the playground to make sure we could get those people with limited mobility to and from the restroom facility, which is all the way through the playground. So we're having to do a little bit of tweaking to the way the playground equipment and features are laid out, as well as the hybrid paths that go through it, okay? And so I'm hopeful to have those final numbers by this afternoon, or by noon is what they promised. And if you'd like, at the workshop, I can provide you with the update that I've been given today, but we're hopeful that everything's going to come together, and then we will execute purchase orders and move forward.
I think it's important to let the public know that we're going to be getting a new playground and a splash pad element at the, where Project Play is currently at the Triangle Park. I think that's going to be a terrific addition to the community.
Sure, and per your request, we are also doing some testing on our well there to determine if using well water for that splash pad is a viable option. We're writing on those water quality tests, but we can move forward either way. It just, we're trying to see what's going to be most advantageous to the county.
Any other questions? Okay. All right. Okay. Oh, Commissioner Harvey.
Ms. Julie? I think one other thing that's important to say is how much we appreciate our community partners. And in this project, the Liberty Club of Plaque in Noontime is the big partner on this who brought a lot of money to the table and would like to get this done. So, you know, it's always fulfilling when we see partners in our community stepping up and helping us financially on that, or just probably things couldn't get done if that was the case, or not done to the ability that we want to see them done.
Sure.
So thank you for working with them also, Ms. Julie.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Julianne. Okay. Any other items to be discussed at the port? Okay, seeing none, we'll adjourn the Port Authority meeting, and I'll reconvene the regular Board of County Commission meeting. We'll move down to item four and ask Sheriff Deloach and Colonel Joe Wells to come forward for some presentations or recognition.
Good morning. It's my pleasure to be before you here again today to recognize the exemplary service of two of our members. As Colonel Wells reads the recommendation for the award, I would ask each of the respective deputies to come down and join me at the podium.
Both of our honorees this morning are veterans of the United States Armed Forces, and as you listen to the accounts of their exemplary service to the citizens of Putnam County, it will be clear how the skills and sense of duty obtained from their service remains with them today. This is why we love to hire veterans at the Putnam County Sheriff's Office. Our first deputy to be recognized today is Master Deputy Sean Valdivia. Master Deputy Valdivia is a veteran of the United States Marine Corps. On October 18, 2019, Master Deputy Sean Valdivia responded to a shooting incident in the West District of Putnam County. Upon arrival, Master Deputy Valdivia discovered that the person who had been shot was struck in the brachial artery. The victim was experiencing arterial bleeding and blood was spurting from the wound. Master Deputy Valdivia used his training and equipment to control the bleeding until Putnam County EMS arrived. While the correct use of life-saving equipment was important in this situation, it was Master Deputy Valdivia's calmness in the face of crisis and control over an intense situation that undoubtedly saved the life of a fellow human being. In an attempt to give you a little understanding of this incident, allow me to read to you a few lines from Master Deputy Valdivia's report. I immediately recognized it as a puncture to his brachial artery, and blood continued to pulsate out. I grabbed a combat application tourniquet, cat tea from my bag, and applied it to the highest point on his right arm, clenched the windlass, and secured it. The time was 03:58 hours. After I applied the tourniquet, I drug the victim out of the hallway about 10 feet into the kitchen. His bicep wound was still heavily oozing blood, so I applied gauze and a pressure dressing to ensure the bleeding stopped. I did another blood sweep to make sure Arthur did not have any additional wounds. Master Deputy Valdivia is hereby awarded the Life Saving Medal.
On a side note, Deputy Valdivia, Sean, come back up here for a second, please. On a side note, Deputy Valdivia was recently, has recently earned the achievement of Master Status Deputy at the Sheriff's Office and recently took the promotional exam and is eligible for promotion here in the near future when a position becomes available.
Yeah, great. Excellent.
Next to be recognized is United States Army Veteran Deputy Matthew Butler. Deputy Butler responded to a check-on welfare call on October 1, 2019. Through a thorough investigation, Deputy Butler learned that the person he was to check on was a veteran who had fallen on hard times. The veteran suffered traumatic brain injury in his service to our country and only had partial use of his body. Deputy Butler discovered that the veteran had no food and immediately knew what needed to be done. Deputy Butler used his own money to purchase food and supplies to help the veteran until additional services could be obtained. While waiting in line to purchase the needed items for the veteran, a resident of Putnam County became aware of what Deputy Butler was doing and jumped in to help with additional items. This resident, an employee of Advance Auto Parts in Palatka, before it was all over, was, is an employee, I'm sorry, is an employee of Advance Auto Parts in Palatka, and before it was all over, even the business was involved in helping to support this veteran in need. You just never know what seemingly routine call for service will turn into and what impact we can have on the lives of the citizens we serve. This is just one example of the kind and compassionate service our deputies provide day in and day out. Furthermore, it is a shining example of just how supportive our community can be when others are in need. This is why we love serving the citizens of Putnam County. As an added note, the veteran was so taken by Deputy Butler's kind acts and service and so appreciative, he has agreed to join us here today. So let us take a moment to thank Army Veteran Rich Wyker for his service as he's with us here today. Thank you, Rich. And for Deputy Butler's kind service to the citizens of Putnam County, he is hereby awarded the Sheriff's Achievement Award.
If you'll join us in front of the dais, Commissioners, we'd like to get a photograph of all of you and these two fine deputies.
As Commissioner Harvey says, it's the best part of our job to be able to honor our employees, especially with the Sheriff's Department, and thank you, gentlemen, for your exemplary service to Putnam County. Okay, we'll move down to item B. I'll ask Ms. Cheryl Lynch to come up and give us a quarterly report for the Small Business Development Council.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me this morning. We've got the third quarter impact report for the services of the Small Business Development Center here in Putnam County. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at that time. Do want to remind you, there's another success story on the back. The co-leads purchased the business, the building that their business was located in, so they're here for the long haul, which is a good sign.
Yeah, I think that's positive that you were able to assist in purchasing that building, so I hope they do well. Any questions of Cheryl, Commissioners?
I can never say enough good about the SBDC and the help they've been to my business, my wife's business, and, you know, I've witnessed this on numerous occasions, the help that the SBDC, especially with Cheryl, to small businesses, especially when it comes to getting access to capital. That's a very, very difficult thing, and I can, personally, I know of another business that'll be opening up soon that she had a lot of influence in helping getting the loan for, so kudos to you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. We'll talk about that next quarter.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Cheryl, for all you do.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Commissioner Harvey?
Cheryl?
Yes.
First, I want to thank you for all you do, and this is a thriving economy now. So what is the hurdles that you see in Florida and this thriving economy that we're in? Because we're asked that as county commissioners, even all the way up to the White House, they want to know what our needs are. And, you know, I've had employers, even from Gainesville, wanting 120 employees from West Putnam, and there isn't 120. And we got solar farms going to be built in West Putnam, and they're looking for hundreds, you know. So what do you see as the biggest challenge that you face right now trying to promote Putnam County and rural Florida?
The labor force is a big issue, and access to capital is always an issue. When you come across businesses that are your normal day-to-day businesses in an urban community, banks tend to take a step back and try to compare metrics that happen in the urban community to the rural community, and sometimes it doesn't cross over. So being able to explain to the lenders the situation, how different businesses impact other businesses in the community and how the dynamics work, but the access to capital and the labor force is the biggest issue of all time. We're at the lowest point of unemployment that we've been in a long time, and just finding the right folks to sit on the right seat in the bus within a business is becoming the biggest challenge of all time. It's not a matter where you can put bodies in there anymore. Sometimes there needs to be additional training that has to happen, and that's an investment on the business's part, that they just don't have the time, not necessarily the financial capacity, but the time capacity to do so.
Right. You know, you're right. When I was, when I had my business, I was able to train people and understand that they would make less, but as I trained them, it might take a few years, but I, as you well said, they don't have that ability right now to wait on that employee to get up to speed, so. All right, I want to get back with you on the capital, because I'd like to take that to my next conference and see what can be done about that.
Okay.
You know, so let me know, okay?
Will do.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Harvey.
If I could do more than, regarding access to capital, one of the things that Cheryl's been able to do that I've personally witnessed with some of the people she's worked with is bringing lenders to the table, not in Putnam County, but getting them to look at Putnam County. Most recently, there was a group out of Chiflin, right, or Ocala? I think they're corporate office in Chiflin, but I spoke to the lender, and I asked him if they would consider opening up a branch here. One of the things that Putnam County is missing is a local bank. When Putnam State Bank and First Federal Bank got shut down, that sucked out over $50 million in lending in Putnam County. It killed our economy. We don't have anybody here that's local that's willing to take a risk on locals, and the metrics that Ms. Lynch is describing is a problem, because you can look at surrounding counties, and if you try to compare us to them, we don't line up. But we need somebody, like the gentleman that I spoke to, that was willing to put out almost a quarter of a million dollar loan for a business in Putnam County, and that's the kind of risk takers that we need to step up to the plate here. We need some, somehow to encourage a local lender to come here.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Okay. If we'll move down to Sheriff.
In my excitement to recognize our two deputies, I failed to look back in the audience and realize that two representatives from Advance Auto were here who were instrumental in helping Deputy Butler with the veteran who was in need. So with your permission, I'd like to deviate from the agenda just to bring them up and recognize them as well.
Okay.
Brian, and Brian, if you'd join me up at the podium, please. I'd like to introduce to all of you Brian Fogarty and Brian Jones, representatives of Advance Auto and friends of the Sheriff's Office. Brian and Brian have been a longtime advocate of law enforcement in Putnam County, and without their help, this would have never been possible for us to help this veteran in the way that we did. So I'd like to take just an opportunity to recognize them for their service to this veteran who dedicated so much of his life in the service of our country. Thank you both so much.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, you want to get a picture with them?
Sheriff Deloach, can we get a picture with them?
Yep.
Okay, we'll move down to item C. I'll ask Mr. Calvin Martin to come forward. The nomination of Mr. Ted, Pastor Ted Stackpole, as Putnam County Government Representative. Welcome.
Good morning, honorable Commissioners. I was last before you in August of this year talking with you about the state of child welfare in Putnam County. And at that time, I also asked to be relieved of service as a representative for Putnam County Government, in which I was appointed in November of 2006 by then Linda Myers, which I was nominated by her and then appointed by the county commissioners. And so at that time, Ted Stackpole's name was mentioned during the meeting, and I did not know Ted at the time, but over the past two months, I got to sit down and talk with Ted about child welfare and about the system itself, and I cannot express to you the level of knowledge, passion, and value that he would bring as your new representative to the Circuit Seven Community Alliance. His experience within foster care, I think, will more than represent the values of this community and ensure that not just proper representation continues for Putnam County, but to ensure that our children and families receive the level of resources from the state of Florida, from the region, on a very consistent basis over the next several years. I was afforded the opportunity to be officially appointed by the county commissioners, and I'm here today before you to ensure that Mr. Ted Stackpole also receives that same honor, if I may ask. And so with that said, before I ask you to officially appoint Ted as your new representative to Circuit Seven, I just want to give him an opportunity just to speak to you all real quick.
So I thank you for this opportunity. My wife and I have been in Putnam County for 23 years. This is our hometown, and one of the things we've been advocating since 2013 in Putnam County is for quality foster families, because the children in child welfare in Putnam County are some of the highest and most vulnerable people group that we represent here in our county, and our families are under attack. And we believe that as we continue to move forward and invest in one of the greatest volunteer organizations, can I just tell you that it's the volunteers in Putnam County that are bringing the quality care to these children. They're not compensated, they're not paid to do this, and as we're able to represent Circuit Seven on the Community Alliance, this affords us greater opportunity to influence child welfare, not just in Putnam County and not just in Circuit Seven, but we believe in the state of Florida. And I would like to believe that Putnam County will lead the way and charge forth in the next several years in how we can bring innovation in child welfare and help children not just find quality families, but also thrive in an environment that seems to be against them many times. But once again, I just want to thank you. This is our county, these are our children, and we believe that they are our responsibility. So we thank you for this opportunity to serve and represent the stakeholder, Putnam County, in the Seventh Circuit.
With that said, I just ask that you appoint Ted to be the representative to the Circuit Seven Community Alliance.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Mr. Stackpole to represent us in the Seventh Circuit.
I'll second.
That's fine.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I step on your light?
No, 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 you're fine. You have a first and have a second.
He's laying down, I can't get him to stand up. All right, so we got a proper motion by Commissioner Rawls and a proper second by Commissioner Goddard, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, under discussion.
And under discussion, Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you. The board asked me to reach out to, I have to call you Reverend Staff, I'm sorry, but asked me to speak out, reach out to you, and I did, and you were more than gracious and very urgent on the conversation to go ahead and serve, and I couldn't think of a better person in this county to represent the needs of the people that you're going to represent than you. And I look forward to your passion and your excitement and the abilities that you've shown over the years to make this happen. So you have a first and a second, and we're eager to vote, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All in favor, and okay, saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Congratulations, and I can't think of a better person to represent us also.
Thank you.
Pastor, before you sit down, Pastor Stackpole is a good friend of my former pastor, Brian Baker, and we, our church actually supports his mission. And Pastor Baker left a month or so ago, and we've been in a search for a pastor, and Ted, I'd like to let you know, we have a new pastor, just Daniel Jones, and thank you for being a substitute pastor for us for a few weeks, okay? All right, thank you. Okay, we'll move down to public comment. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It is not reasonable to expect the board will engage in debate or deliberation on matters on which the board has no prior information as part of the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. We prefer that you fill out a comment card. They're available at the entrance and the exit of our building, and give them to Sarah Oliver, our clerk, to your right, to my left, and when you come to the podium, please speak clearly into the microphone and state your name and address. The first speaker today is Mr. Douglas Hayes.
Good morning. My name's Douglas Hayes. Live at 216 Hilltop Avenue, Satsuma, Florida. Candidate for County Commissioner, District Three. I actually made notes, so I won't suck up too much time. I want to commend you guys for finding $2 million, apparently, for tourism. One of the things I noticed in my travels as a suggestion of how to expedite some of those monies is that there is no boundary signs stating welcome to Putnam County. Ideal place to put a billboard with a very simple map showing our resources, an example of being gardens, our historic places, that kind of thing, along with a welcome to Putnam County. On 207, when you're coming through Hastings, they have an attempt of a rest area. Good place to start as far as providing some type of information as to what we have for the traveler that pulls into that rest area and is proceeding onward to Putnam County. Next thing, emergency services. I read in the newspaper that you're having a rough time trying to fill the void of the need for your EMTs, and naturally, we have a problem with filling the void for a fire rescue. I've discovered also funding is an issue, is to attempt the idea of creating what I would like to call the Bucket Brigade. That would be your entity that would provide fundraising mechanism, along with volunteers that are not trained necessarily for EMT and firefighting, but they can get some minor training and a T-shirt, and when you have crowd control, guidance in traffic situations and that kind of thing, the warm bodies that can be around there, other than tying up the paid workers and the trained professionals. Say, for example, when the paid workers and the trained professionals. Say, for example, when there was that big train wreck and there was a big hug-a-blue, you'd have people in designated T-shirts and ability to guide traffic and that kind of thing. The other thing is to possibly attempt an internship program with the hospital or with the university in the emergency services as a ride-along. You've got doctors that need to put their time in, and they could actually be a ride-along because they're trained doctors and everything to help with emergency services. You'd have your EMT that would do the protocol, but at the same time, that would be that second individual in the vehicle. I discovered the other day, my neighbor had called, apparently, in the morning because she was sick. And there was a fire truck and an ambulance there, four individuals tied up, and she was trying to get a ride to the hospital. Naturally, they kind of said, now, 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 we can't provide that service. Possibly for personnel safety, that was the reason that that was done. But at the same time, it could be the mismanagement of manpower. And so if one methodology would be possibly to have what's considered a first responder unit that has first aid capability and everything, along with, and that way, the fire truck can be in one location if there's a wreck. There's so many personnel for an individual, which I am hearing that that is a common call. The proverbial person that is on the government dole tends to think that's a way to get to the hospital. Finally, animal services. There's a program called Wolf Trax that I have discussed with you guys, along with county administration. It is a program where citizens walk their dogs and have an app on their phone, and they get accountability for the mileage. And the Wolf Trax program donates money to the animal shelter. I've discussed it with Ms. Suarez. She has attempted to sign up for the program to discover that when she signed up under animal services, that the predecessor had already signed up, or Animal Control, the predecessor, already signed up under animal services, which created kind of a little piece of wood in spokes. And in turn, was trying to straighten it out. I've been trying to actively get involved with that because once I'm aware that the program is in state, then I personally will be out trying to promote the idea to our community. Because once we get citizen involvement, it's a funding mechanism for our shelter. In that process, I have communicated with Ms. Suarez, and she basically said, I'm waiting on email. So I did what I always do. I took the ball in my hands, and I made a phone call. We are signed up under Animal Control, even if we go with Animal Services in a name change, that either way, the accountability for the mileage will exist. At the same time, I was looking at the general fund in regards to the monies and designation in the accounts so that I could get an idea where that money goes and where it comes from, to discover that we've got about $775 in donation money, along with that there is a line item for PetSmart. And then in talking to, which I want to commend Mr. Smith's office, because they've been very helpful with providing the information. And then also, Ms. Papel returned my phone call and educated me a little bit that if we wanted to have a line item accountability for the Wolf Trax program, so we can get an idea of what type of participation, that it's up to your board to make that decision. And so I offer a suggestion. In fact, once again, Mr. Smith's office was on the ball, and apparently, the money bean counters have emailed each other with the same idea. And so we're waiting on your end of it to wave the magic wand, and that way, we could have a line item accountability for that funding mechanism. And finally...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Yeah.
Your six minutes is up.
Six, yeah. I went ahead and allowed you six.
One last item, please?
Thirty seconds.
Okay. In regards to the dog licensing, discovered that, tried to find out how we could get an accountability with our potential earnings are. Been looking at the rabies tag idea, is how many responsible pet owners have had their dogs vaccinated. So been put in different directions. Department of Health might have accountability, or Animal Control, Animal Services. Well, it turns out that when a veterinarian does do the dog licensing, they send the information to Animal Services. So the ball is in Ms. Suarez's court, that she could get accountability as to how many dogs are in the county, so we get an idea what our potential revenue is. In the same circumstance, when I went to the new animal hospital, apparently, there's a stack this thick of those vaccinations that have not been picked up because everybody points at the sky and the ground as whose responsibility is. Safe Pets, apparently, is in their own little world and does not submit information to the county in regards to the vaccination program. So it's going to be really tough to get a true accountability as to how many dogs we have in this county to get an idea of what our potential revenue is, when we're looking at a possibility of $200,000 to $250,000 that we're missing out on revenue. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Rawls?
I've got a question for you, Mr. Hayes. At the beginning, you said, we found $2 million in tourist development. Is that correct?
Yes, I had heard that on an open forum. Is that...
I'm aware of around 1.2 million.
Okay.
Okay. So if that's the same thing you're talking about, it's not quite 2 million.
Okay. In fact, I'd heard you were the one that found it?
I didn't find it. It just, it was, it was a document that I was given. The numbers were there. It was been there. It just had never been presented to me in that manner. So, yeah.
Well, congratulations. It made the public aware of it.
Yep. Now we got to spend it.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Okay, next speaker, Mr. Nicole Grace with Keep Putnam Beautiful.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Nicole Grace, 115 Red Fox Trail, Platteville, Florida. I'm making sure I get that right. Good morning. I just wanted to let y'all know, it is a great day. It's beautiful out. And if you haven't been outside, except to run to the car and then in here, take some time later this week to walk around. Our county is absolutely gorgeous, and it is a wonderful time to get out and clean it up just a little bit more. With the cooler weathers, we're not going to have the concerns with heat. I, for one, am affected by the heat and have had a deputy actually slow down when I was mowing my lawn because I looked that bad. But that is not a problem in this weather that we've been given. So if anyone is interested, I would love to encourage them to call Keep Putnam Beautiful. We have supplies to provide you with, and I am more than happy to drive out to where you are. I know people are surprised. They're like, you're going to drive to Crescent City? Yeah. I will call. If you have a cleanup, I will drive down there and I will bring things to you. I may stop for tacos. But my telephone number is 386-325-9598. Or if you see me on Facebook or at Publix, stop me there. And I don't mind talking to people. And I want Larry Harvey to do my eulogy. I have to say, I love hearing when you talk about people. It's awesome. And that's what I have for now.
Okay.
I have business cards, too, if anybody needs a...
Yeah, I would love to have a business card. I don't think I have one, so.
Just bring them.
Okay.
Come on.
I've got more. I've got more, too.
You can just hang that one.
I've got like, I just got them from Sam. I've got like 50.
Bring them all.
Fifty is all you got?
Okay.
Seventy-three thousand people in the...
I have.
Oh.
Okay. Thank you, Nicole.
I can pass them down if you want.
Oh, okay.
Whatever. Here.
Okay.
Nicole, you're quite entertaining.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next speaker, Mr. Tim Hotteling.
Hello again. Tim Hotteling, 105 Riverside Way, San Mateo. I'd like to talk to you just briefly on the proposed Board Policy 01.001, Citizen Concern/Issue Resolution. That came to me. I gave you all, sent you an email. Nobody responded that said, heads up. They're trying to put you guys in a box. It said, if any citizen dared to talk to their county commissioner, that's my words, "The county commissioner shall direct the citizen to the proper department to report a concern." And it flows through the process that sets aside 30 to 60 days until a citizen can, or a commissioner can talk to his constituent. And if he doesn't like it, then he can do what I'm doing right now. Stand in front of you and talk for three minutes, which, as I recall, it starts out, it's not reasonable to expect that a citizen would hear anything or have conversation if you stand up here. I think that the bottom line being is that y'all should be asking, who composed this? What was the process? If I could see it, I'm hoping that you all could see it, and you'd want to ask why. You know, we've got that audit that came down, said there's over 200 citizen complaints. And obviously, there's a need to flow this sort of thing, and putting it in a box doesn't address that in my mind. And so I've had my three minutes.
Okay. Commissioner Goddard?
Yeah. Now, Mr. Hotteling, now, I know this commissioner appreciates what you send to us, but when you send it to all of us, we cannot respond back to you on your email. I'm not sure if you're aware of that, and the public's aware of that. If we're all included, we cannot respond. But if you send it to us individually, then we can respond back to you on an email or call you. But I personally appreciate what you send us.
Point being is if you guys had a heads up, and you took a look, it says, somebody comes griping to you, you shall point them to somebody else. That policy should have been pulled for, you know, before it ever got to the floor, and it wasn't. So, thank you.
Commissioner Rawls?
Mr. Hotteling, my response was to you verbally. And just in full disclosure, Mr. Hotteling is one of the people that I lean to a lot for guidance and information. I've got an informal Commissioner Advisory Council that looks at stuff like this. But I agree. I think it's absolutely absurd that the tail is going to tell the dog what to do. In this case, the administration wants to tell the commissioners that they cannot speak to the public. This goes right straight to transparency. It aggravates me to think that we would even try to veil anything in this county. Everything done here is done for the public, for the citizens. It's paid for by them. We're paid for by them. And we shouldn't keep anything from them. They should have direct access to their commissioners if they so choose. The commissioners don't have to answer necessarily, but the public should have access to us, not having the policy tell us that we cannot respond to the staff, to the public, that we shall take this and run through this. I personally disagree with it. I'm going to vote against it, just so you'll know. The form that it's been presented on is not in any way. I also don't like the fact that it wasn't brought up as an agenda item, that it was proposed to be put in at the end of the meeting, not on the agenda, but under the county administrator comments. So who asked for this? I don't know, but I'm not in favor of it, just so you'll know.
Thank you. One more thought.
I think, before we go further, wait, wait, wait.
I'm sorry.
I got the floor, okay?
I got bad hearing. I'm sorry.
Okay. I'll speak up a little more. All right. Are we talking about two different things here?
We are.
Yes, you sure are. You're talking about an agenda item for this afternoon's workshop.
Do what now?
The agenda item that Mr. Ho was talking about is on schedule for this afternoon's workshop.
Right. The other one is the personnel policy that's going to be brought up under your comments, correct?
That is correct. That's the direction that the board of county commissioners at the last meeting.
Okay. All right. So we got that clarified. Now we...
I don't like either one of them.
Sir?
I don't like either one of them, so that's fine.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Turner?
Mr. Tim, I didn't read it like you're reading it. Sorry, my thing was off. I didn't read it like you're reading it. Basically, what it said to me was, is that if someone wants to talk to someone in the county, that there's going to be some kind of a system to track that call. But nowhere did I read it in that, that you couldn't call your commissioner, that you had to go to number four, or that your commissioner couldn't talk to whoever they wanted to if they called, or try to help them. It was more of a process that if somebody calls an employee, and I'm just going to pick a department at Public Works, for instance, and ask that their road be fixed, and they don't contact the commissioner, then if that person doesn't get any satisfaction, then the next step would be to go to the department head. And the next step would be to go to administration, and the next step would be to go to your commissioner. But not one time did I read in there any place where they couldn't skip one, two, and three, and go straight to four and call our commissioner. I didn't read that. If that's in there, I'd appreciate you pointing it out to me, and I'll go along with Commissioner Rawl, and I'll say, let's get it out of there. Because there's nothing I want, there's nothing that I want that would stand in the way of somebody calling me and me helping them if I can. Nothing. This is just a way to track the procedure, which they don't have right now.
That I agree, sir. But in plain English, it says, "If a citizen makes contact with a county commissioner regarding a concern, THE county commissioner," which would be you, "shall," not "may," "shall," "direct a citizen to the proper department to report the concern."
Yeah.
That's English.
But that doesn't, but that doesn't mean that that's how we're going to take care of it. We can, I'd do it right now. If you call me right now and say, who do I talk to about a zoning issue? I'll tell you to go see Mike Brown.
Fine.
I'd do it right now. If you want me to go see Mike Brown with you, I will. If you want me to go see Mike Brown on your behalf, I will. But I'm going to tell you how to get it done. That's probably half the calls that I go through...
I understand.
...are just telling people how to get something done within the government.
I understand that, and it'd be really wonderful if Public Works had that program where you could verify whether a complaint's been called, and how long it is, and whether it's reasonable to be fixed, and things like that.
I don't disagree with that at all, Mr. Tim. In fact, I agree with that.
And that's a huge amount of your work. And I really appreciate all the time and effort y'all have to put in to do it. But when I see words that say "shall" and "may not" and things like that, it bothers me because we've come a long way in the last few years and...
Well, I had kind of fought, I had kind of fought for this program, or some kind of, I mean, all the times that I've asked staff to return phone calls and whatever, I've asked for some kind of a program to be put into place where we could track these calls and watch them move along. And if nobody calls them back, we know who didn't call them back. Was it the original employee, or was it the end game?
I fully agree with you. Very, very fully agree with you. But the word that I've read, you know, the end result is, I can stand here for three minutes, and it's not reasonable to expect anything to happen. And...
I don't believe there's placed a call to me that I haven't talked to you as long as you wanted me to talk to you.
In any event, I think it needs, the logic is good, but "shall not," "may not," and whatever. Like I said, I sent you a heads up, and it's still on the agenda, so.
Well, I just want to say before you leave the podium, I, like Mr. Rawls, consider everything you ever tell me and respect your opinion on a lot of things, and you know that. So, you know, I think that I could have answered you back just straight to you, but I knew you were coming here today. And so I could answer you back. I think Commissioner Goddard may be a little bit mistaken. We can answer them directly. We just can't reply all. That would be the violation. But I think we can answer one-on, you know, one-on-one. And I didn't do it, and I apologize for that.
And it wouldn't have taken but a simple, "Got it, and it's going to be pulled," or "Got it," whatever. Do you got it?
Well, that's actually in workshops this afternoon.
Yes, it's in workshops.
That's in workshops this afternoon.
That's in workshops this afternoon.
My three minutes.
Well, it's only three minutes if we don't invite you to stay, Mr. Tim.
Commissioner Harvey?
I think you were trying to drive him a point.
Mr. Tim? Mr. Tim? Yeah, I'm not done. I do, you and I have talked for many, many years.
Oh, yeah.
And sometimes your emails...
We've climbed a lot of mountains.
I get confused on the rhetoric inside the email. You and I have talked about that. But I do love the emails. I had the same heartburn this morning, and it was the first thing I talked to our administrator about. But that meeting's at 2:00 today.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, I think it is a step in the right direction. Is all the words properly used? I don't know that, but we'll hash that out at 2:00 today. But I'm glad we're moving in the direction. And I will say this, too. I'm with Commissioner Turner and Commissioner Rawl. I work for 73,000 people. You call me, I'm going to call someone, I'm going to take you there with them, I'm going to send you there, whatever needs to happen. We all know that, that we work for that.
Yeah.
And no way do I ever want my phone not to be ringing off the hook. I had a girl one time work for me, Tim, and I'm going to go off on a tangent for a second. I had a girl one time work for me, Tim, and I'm just going to go off on a tangent for a second. She came to me, and she said, "Mr. Harvey, I can't work on Mondays and Fridays anymore." And I said, "Why is that?" She said, "The phone rings too much on Mondays and Fridays." I said, "Then you can't work for me Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, because I need it to ring that much." I need my phone to ring. We need to hear from the people of Putnam County, not only with the problem, but with the solution. Like I said on the radio this morning, you know your community better than we know your community. You know the solution for your area better than we know it. Bring the solution to you when you come. And that's what I appreciate, appreciate about you. You bring those solutions, you're going to be at the two o'clock meeting today.
Oh, yeah.
I look forward to having that lively debate, finding words that we can use that can satisfy the whole thing. So, thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rawls?
See, Tim, one more thing. We do have a, a process in place that has call tracking.
Yes.
That is in place currently, unless it's been taken out recently.
It's in place.
It's a case number assigned?
We can, we can talk about that.
There's a case number signed, and it's assigned to people to respond to?
Since we picked on Public Works, let's.
I didn't pick on Public Works.
Mike Nimitz, Public Works Commissioners, if I may add a point of clarification here. All the phone calls that come to Public Works are logged into a, as a service request, and assigned to the appropriate supervisor to follow up on. And if for some reason, generally, if something doesn't happen, you know, and a commissioner gets a call about it, it goes into a commissioner's hot list, okay? And then it gets pushed elevated to where either I'll respond, or I'll have our secretary respond, or whatever, and get action on it immediately. So, we have two systems in place to really try to address.
Mike, I, I appreciate it. I'm sorry that I picked on Public Works. Can I raise Public Works, and I'll say, uh, John Selfie's Building Department, when somebody calls them, and it's not done right? I wasn't picking on you directly.
Yes, we can provide copies of the service request. I could give you a copy of the commissioner's hot list. I mean, these are all, all documents. No, we don't have the capability to do that right now. Again, you're talking about, sometimes we'll get a commissioner hot list item. A commissioner have three items a day to five items. You multiply that times five, you look at that, I mean, this is an extensive effort. And that's not including the service requests we process, too. So, there's a lot of work that goes into this.
We're going to, we're going to discuss it a little bit more this afternoon. And, uh, Mr. Tim, I did not respond. I'm kind of leaning towards, but I agree with Commissioner Turner. I'm very leery of, when I know we're all getting emailed, of responding because of the sunshine law and that. So, that's why I did not. So, Minister Suggs?
Yes, sir, just to bring a little clarity, just so we all understand, that this is a draft of a, of a potential policy from staff to the board of county commissioners, to be discussed in the open meeting at two o'clock this afternoon. This isn't a policy that anybody's trying to push through or rush through. This is a directive that came down from our legislative audit that we received over 18 months ago, that we didn't have this policy in place. And so, uh, you know, when we drafted a new job description of the deputy county administrator, I put in ombudsman in that, so we would have at least a point of contact. Uh, but the, the legislative audit committee wanted a policy in place, and so Mr. Reynolds and, and staff has went, went out and looked at other communities with policies, and drafted one that we thought would fit Putnam County. It's not to take away any responsibility, any authority, or any directive from the board of county commissioners. What this policy does is gives our citizens in our community a system in which they can follow and track their calls, their concerns, and it gives us an opportunity to track those calls and concerns, make sure we're meeting the goals and, and needs of our community, and then whatever the commission may address after that. But, uh, but this is a policy that was, is scheduled to be discussed at two o'clock today, and we'll go from there after two o'clock.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Commissioner Rawls?
Mr. Suggs, it, this is not an ombudsman procedure. This, this is a far cry from that. This is regarding, um, just regular complaints from the public. And at one point, the last budget year, we had the opportunity to put in, to motion, an office of inspector general. My understanding is that the audit generals are looking for something more along those lines, not just a, 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 a regular complaint department. But it doesn't mention the ombudsman in there. So, is this, is this going to be our official ombudsman's policy?
This will be a policy that we'll discuss at two o'clock with the board of county commissioners on how we might want to follow through, attract and citizens' concerns, complaints, and issues of that nature.
Because you, you said that this is in response to the audit generals?
That's correct. No, I did not. I said the audit committee that came down, legislative audit, not the auditor general's office. Legislative audit committee. Two separate entities.
Can I get a copy of that? When was that, when was that done?
The legislative audit, it was on almost two years ago. We're in the process of responding after the 18-month investigation.
Okay, so, but I thought they used the word ombudsman, having a point of contact where citizens or employees could file an official concern or complaint. But not this, and, and the other part of this, too, and I'll just say this, and I'll, I'll go ahead and yield back the floor. Have, having it where you have a policy that says, "The commissioner shall," that's a policy. So then, if we do deviate from that policy, we've deviated from the policy, and that, that's, at, at what point do we have any order? So, I, you know, I, I stand, I stand opposed to the, the language that's there. There's some other, a few other plate areas that I have concern about, but we'll discuss it at two o'clock.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I also have some comments, but I'll wait till two o'clock when we're supposed to be talking about this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tim. Any other public comment? Okay, we'll close the public comment portion of the meeting, and we'll move down to item six, commissioners, the consent agenda. Uh, any items the commissioners are wishing to pull? And I'll start to my far left with Commissioner Harvey.
I have none, sir.
Commissioner Turner?
I have none.
And before I go further, we have an addition I forgot.
O.
Is O, okay, on the tourist development recommendations. Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
Uh, item L.
L?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Goddard?
I have none.
Okay, and I'd like to pull item F. It's been requested to pull F, so could I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, G, H, I, J, K, M, N, and O.
Second.
Got a proper motion on the floor by Commissioner Harvey, and a proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Okay, any further discussion? Are all in favor, and in case saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay, it's been requested to, um, to pull item F, um, and have Sheriff Deloitte come forward. He's had some concerns on the, uh, the nine eleven state fall grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, actually, following our conversation, I was able to get some feedback from my staff regarding the concerns that I had, and whether or not this particular piece of software would integrate with our computer-rated dispatch system. I have, in fact, found out that this mapping system that is enumerated on, under consent agenda item F actually has nothing to do with our CAD system, and strictly relates to our ability to track nine-one-one calls specifically. So, essentially, from what I've been told by my staff, is the software will give us the ability to plot on a map wireless nine-one-one calls, um, which we have not had that ability previously. So, I, I rescind my objection to it, and ask that we proceed forward with it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve item F.
Take it.
Okay, got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey, and a proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, in case saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you, Chair. And, um, item L, Commissioner Rawls?
Um, I just, when I was reading through this, I would think that we might have an, we could have an issue if we award this to Batsch and Smith, because it says that Phase One was awarded and executed on November of 18. And now we're going to come back and award a, an alternate, but the original contract was not for the alternate, correct? I'm just, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to make sure we're not getting ourselves in, in legal turmoil here. Because you, you had a bid, and you had a base bid and alternate. You accepted the base bid, you executed a contract on that.
It's my understanding with alternates, that's part of the contract. You can execute an alternate later when funding becomes available.
But it says here, the contract has been completed. So, if, if the contract is completed, how do you turn around and award possibly the alternate that wasn't awarded as part of the original contract? I'm, it's just a question, you know? I'm just raising it, because it keeps us out of trouble.
Good afternoon. One of the reasons that we included page one of the original agenda item is that your original award was approved and authorized chairman and county administrator on this, uh, signature on the award of bid 1901. When you make an award on bid 1901, you award that bid in its entirety. How you actually execute the contract for services is something that you do based on funding. So, just like we award Project Play like we did, we're going to execute one contract here and one contract here. However, what was done on this bid from the very beginning was a blanket award. And then the contract for services was for a dollar finite amount, which was your base bid. When you go back to do the execution of the second contract, we are not here for a procurement award. We're here for authority to execute a contract based on the threshold dollar amount of that contract. So, what we're asking today is the ability to award that contract because of the dollar threshold, not because it needs an award for procurement.
To me, it just sounds a little bit fishy, that you send a notice of award out for the bid, and then you send a contract out for a half of the amount, and you're going to come back a year later and issue another contract. I'm just standing there for the record. I got, if, if you're sure that we're not, we're not in any jeopardy of litigation, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it. It's definitely a lower amount.
Okay. Any other questions?
I make a motion that we approve, um, item L.
Second.
Got a proper motion by Commissioner Rawls, a proper second by Commissioner Harvey to approve item L. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, in case saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay, all the consent items are passed. Before we move on to code enforcement, we're going to take a three-minute, eight-second recess.
Cut us a little short today, huh?
We're going to deviate on the agenda just a little bit, and we're going to go ahead and move to the public hearing. Uh, item eight, the extension of the simulated gambling business moratorium. So, I'll open the public hearing up. And Mr. Mike Brown.
Mr. Chairman and Commission, Mike Brown, Planning Development Services. This is a request to extend the moratorium on the simulated gambling facilities, also known as internet cafes. As you remember, last year, the sheriff had asked for an extension while they were doing an investigation tied with a, um, a court finding. This, um, and staff would like, uh, the opportunity to develop an ordinance for locating these into the, in the future. So, we are requesting an extension of that moratorium for a maximum of one year. Why we develop that, uh, ordinance? And any questions of staff?
Any questions, commissioners?
I think you have to open it up.
Yeah.
Open it up for public, uh, comment, and then I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, we'll open up the public for public comment. Any individuals wishing to speak for or against this moratorium? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion of this, uh, hearing, and Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we extend this, the simulated gambling business moratorium for another year.
Second. Okay, we got a proper motion to extend for a year by Commissioner Turner, proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, in case saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you, Mike. Okay, Ms. Mitra, we'll, uh, move to item seven, code enforcement.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Good morning.
First item on code enforcement agenda is, um, fine reduction request for code case 2014-580. Property address is 199 Carrier Road, Crescent City, Florida. Property owners now are Robert Henry Richards. He's the one who requested the fine reduction. This case was started in August 2014. Two special magistrate's hearing were, um, held for the enforcement. Permit was pulled, um, for the demolition of the mobile home. Final inspection was done in July of 2019, and we received fine reduction request in August of 2019. Original fine amounts were $23,608.50. Staff recommends reduction to $1,761.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions of staff?
I have a question.
Okay.
His attorney had requested a thirty-day notice. Was he given that?
Yes, sir. We sent him a certified mail with the hearing date of today.
And is he present today?
No, sir.
Um, actually, this gentleman's standing up with his hand up.
I'm sorry.
Please state your name and address for the.
John Key, 415 St. Johns Avenue, Placa, Florida. Commissioners, good morning.
Morning.
Yes, I represent the landowner, the property owner. He is in complete agreement with this. He expects to, uh, take care of payment of their, uh, fine reduction within the next 90 days.
Do you need a motion? I make a motion. And, and he's, he's, he's fine with, with the fine reduction at 1761, correct?
Correct.
I make a motion that, uh, we approve the reduction of $1,761 for 199 Carrier Road, case number 2014-00580.
I'll second. Okay, got a proper motion by Commissioner Rawls, proper second by Commissioner Goddard, um, for discussion. Commissioner Turner?
Uh, yes, is this, uh, consistent with what we've been doing? I mean, I know it, we used, weren't we taking something else?
We were waving them. I was going to make a.
The monthly administration.
I just figured since he's happy.
I don't think it applies on this one. Okay, that's fine. I just want to make sure that we remain consistent throughout this process as much as possible. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, we got a proper motion, proper second, all in favor, in case saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign.
The second item on the code enforcement agenda is, uh, fine reduction request for case number 2017-280. Property address is 109 Lisbon Street, Interlaken, Florida. This case was started in January of 2017. Three special magistrate hearings were held for the enforcement. Initial order was issued into October of 2018 for abatement and foreclosure. Property was sold in 2019. The new owners have obtained all the permits, all the inspections, and complied in September of 2019. Brian Kurtz is the new owner, and he's the one who requested the fine reduction request. Original fine amounts were $10,000, uh, $10,825, and staff recommends reduction to $1,132.
And Mr. Chairman?
Okay, Commissioner Goddard first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He actually rang.
Yeah. This, and, and this, this is where, what we've been looking for, right here, where someone has, we've got a property that's in horrible condition, someone bought this piece of property with the proper procedures, cleaned it all up, and has now made this a nice piece of property. And that's where we generally, we have been given a deduction on this administrative monthly fee of $340, which would drop this down to a, uh, enforcement action of 792, if I'm, my math is correct. But this is what we're looking for. These are the properties that we're, we're, we're all in, in favor for. So, uh, if you wanted to speak, I'll, I'll read, otherwise, I was going to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion that we accept $792 as a reduction of the, uh, of the fine, and that'll be for case number 2017-281, or 280.
280.
I'll second that motion, and I assume that it also gives them 90 days to pay?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we got a proper motion to reduce it down to. Okay, we got a proper motion to reduce it down to 792, did you say?
Seven ninety-two, yes.
Seven ninety-two? Is that math correct, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I wrote down.
By Commissioner Goddard.
I love it.
Proper second by Commissioner Turner. Well, I knew he'd know, he could've all figured it up, yeah. So, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, in case saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
The last item on the code enforcement agenda is request for abatement and foreclosure for case number 2005-411. Property address is 232 Kite Road, San Mateo, Florida. This case was started back in July of 2015. The property was cited for the unsafe building having numerous animals on the property. You can see that from the pictures. There were more than fifty dogs and all other animals. Initially, the, the property went to the magistrate hearing in September of 2016, and after the initial order, there was no compliance achieved. So the property went back for another hearing for administrative fine and lien. And back in July of 2018, we got another magistrate hearing to get abatement and foreclosure order from special magistrate. As of October 2019, total fines and fees are due for this properties are $16,193.50. The taxes are unpaid for the last five years. The property continues to be an eyesore for the community with a dangerous structure. Code enforcement staff with the endorsement of building official recommends that foreclose, foreclosing on this property, abating it, and then selling it, selling the clear property in order to offset the cost for the county.
This is one we had already gone to work on.
Yeah, workshop. All right, Commissioner Goddard? Were you out there? Okay, Commissioner Turner?
Yes, I just had a quick question. This, tax deed hasn't been applied for on this one. It's got five years tax, but has the actual tax deed been applied for and gone?
I don't think so. It just shows unpaid for the last five years.
Okay, will the county have, I know it went to workshop, but, so I apologize for this, but will the county have to pay those people back those taxes that they put in for the five years that the taxes have remained unpaid, and those taxes were bought by, on a tax certificate by somebody, I'm assuming? So what, is the county gonna have to actually pay those five years taxes if it abates?
Yeah, taxes always have priorities, so the certificate holder would be, you know, had to be made, made whole on those, if you have a private, you know.
Do we have any idea how much money that is, that the county's gonna have to pay to take ownership of this property?
Let me see if I have it. We can look that up and...
Mitra, how much time do you think you would need? Would you have time to do it between now and this afternoon's workshop, and we can continue this case if it suits everybody?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to know before we say abate and then take it, how much money we're gonna actually have to write a check for out of our pocket to get it?
I, I follow you, Commissioner. Can we at least get it to go for abatement, since this is an open, accessible structure that's detrimental to the neighborhood?
Yes.
Maybe we can always come back for foreclosure?
Okay, well, I'd like to finish it this afternoon, too, but I'm good for abatement right now. That's no problem with me whatsoever. The other Commissioners will go along with it, that's no problem. And then, but before we vote for foreclosure, I'd like to know how much we're actually gonna pay to take a piece of property that may not be worth what we're gonna pay for it, even though it does need abating.
We will bring you the amount for outstanding tax this afternoon.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we, that we give the authority to abate this, this case number 205-00411.
Second. Okay, we got a proper motion to move to abatement by Commissioner Turner, proper second by Commissioner Harvey. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, in case saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
And if you'll just let me know what that's gonna, it's a, it's a numbers thing. I mean, if the property's worth so much money, and we're gonna pay that much for it, just abate it and let it stay where it is, or go back to taxes, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, John and Mitra. Okay, we'll move down to item nine. Honorable Tim Smith, clerk of court.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have no items today.
Okay, we'll move down to appointments. Any appointments by the Commissioners? We'll move to Commissioner Rawls first.
I have a question about, looks like we're having a tough time getting people on the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. What are the roles and responsibilities for that?
Administrator Suggs, you wanna?
Yes, sir. I don't have that information in front of me, but what we can do is, we can research and bring that information back.
I got something in mind, but they ask me what you're doing, I told them I don't know.
Yeah, we'll get that information, gather it up, and email each one of the Commissioners with us, so you'll all have it.
Okay.
Commissioner Goddard?
I have none.
Mr. Harvey?
I have none right now, but I do wanna answer the question. It's also on our website, and on, under our committees, on our transparency, it says what those roles and responsibilities would do to that. So you just pull it up on the website.
Okay.
And that's, 'cause I'm having a hard one on the zoning board, 'cause people don't wanna give their financials up right now, and they don't wanna make that public. So I'm having an issue with that. Well, it's a good economy. People are, they don't wanna be known, so, but I have no appointments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Turner?
I have none today, thank you.
Okay, I have none either, so, okay, we'll move to county administrator comments.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. A couple of things. First of all, let's start out on a positive note. We held our first strategic planning session down in Crescent City. Mr. Chairman, I won't steal your thunder if you're gonna make comments about this later, but I would tell you that I thought it was a well-attended, very good event. A lot of positive feedback from the folks that attended the meeting. Got positive feedback after the meeting, so I'm sure Mr. Chairman will, will speak on that later, so I won't go into that anymore, but just be reminder, reminded, I should say, that you have two more opportunities. November sixteenth, from nine to noon at Ravine Gardens, and then the November twenty-first, from five-thirty to seven-thirty at Interlochen. And I will be in attendance, as well as other staff at, at both of those, and any questions or issues that come up, please let us know, but I thought it was a very good event.
I'd like to add a comment before you move forward. It, it was, I welcomed everybody and thanked the Crescent City Women's Club for allowing us to use their facility again. It was very well-attended. Probably fifty-five people. Mr. Earl, I appreciate you being there. And they broke everybody in groups, and they gave you a number as you came in, so if you came in with your spouse, you didn't get to sit with your spouse, you sat with somebody else. And Ms. Crotty, I believe Marilyn Crotty, was a facilitator and did an excellent job. Mr. Tim Ho was there also, and so was Rhonda Masters. And so, but I had some really good feedback about it, so I'd be, it was real positive. But I just welcomed everybody, and I left, and I went to a Rotary Club meeting, and, but had a lot of good, positive comment on it, so thank you, and looking forward to the, to the other ones, like you say, on November sixteenth and November twenty-first.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Then the next item that I have for this morning is, at the last BOCC meeting, it was requested that we go ahead and put together a personnel policy discussion for this morning, so follow in that direction. Staff got together, Mr. Reynolds and Ms., Ms. Parker from HR got together, looked at the old policies, put a word document together, and made the straitthes and other lines of the discussion topics for this morning. You folks were emailed last week, and we'd like to go ahead this morning and move forward with, with these policies as submitted today.
Okay, Commissioners, comment?
Start with, I know there's a comment on this. I have, yes, sir. I just didn't know if they wanted me to go first or not. The, on H in the first portion of this, of the classification plan on H, it says that we struck by the Board of County Commissioners and put in the county administrator. I personally don't have any problem at all with the county administrator being able to approve this, but the Board of County Commissioners should also have the ability to approve it. And so it needs, to me, it needs to read, the establishment of new or additional compositions can be authorized by the Board of County Commissioners or by the county administrator, as long as the, the, subject to adequate justification of need and the availability Also, on the first page of, and I'm sorry, my pages aren't numbered, so I believe it's on the first page of the 401 salary plan, now it says 502 salary, 5.02 salary plan, non-exempt, under C1.
Same thing.
And it says the salary plan consists of basic salary schedule as adopted by the county, which was struck, and, and it says approved by the county administrator, and I think it says, needs to read, approved by the Board of County Commissioners or the county administrator. And the reason I'm saying this is, well, to me, the interpretation is, you're preventing the board from getting involved in this if it desires to do so. So, the next one I have is on the very last page of the document, looks like, so I had one before that. Yeah, let's start with the very last page of the document, was another one of those that they struck by the Board of County Commissioners and added the county administrator, and I would like to leave Board of County Commissioners in and put, or the county administrator. I don't think that'll tie his hands, and it won't prevent the board from getting involved either if they deem to do so. Now, there's two of them that I need some discussion on from the board. One of them, if I can figure out what page it's on, 'cause there's not, there's no pages on my one that was printed out.
Can you read the title of it? 'Cause I gotta pull the...
Well, it would be under, it'd be under G, but I think it's on the second or the third, three different documents. There's a salary plan, so it'd be under the salary plan.
So that's promotions and reclassification? Page six?
That's where it is, right there, is what I wanna talk about.
Yeah, that's what it is. Okay.
So that's your page six?
Well, no, it's not. There it is. It's page, well, now might quit, oh, eight, seven. Page seven of eleven.
There's a paragraph in there that sees, it's a C that says adjustment to salary schedule and classes. I just think everybody needs to read that, and I would like some suggestions from other board members on if they think that that reads what we want it to read. If it does, then, then I'm good, but it just didn't quite sit good with me, and I, I think we ought to at least bring it out to everybody's attention. It basically says the county administrator shall have the authority to adjust the overall salary schedule as necessary. It will be the responsibility of the county administrator to have periodic salary and economic surveys conducted. But it, I know that earlier in the document, there was a, a line in there that said that these different things we did had to be within budget. It had to be within the budget, current budget constraints. Well, I think that needs to be added to this paragraph, at the very least, to say that it also, that it has to be done within current budget constraints, even though the, the plan, because I'm not sure that the, the comment wasn't in the, in the, the other plan. There's three documents here, I'm not sure that comment wasn't in the second document instead of the part of this one. So, and then, I just need Matt or somebody to, 'cause I know Matt's the author of this, so, correct, Matt? Okay, so, I apologize, three from the end, there's a paragraph, looks like it's on page nine, it's right before the salary plan. Basically says reclassification from a demotion. I need you to explain what you're trying to say there. Maybe I'm being thick, I'm not quite sure, but I didn't really understand what you were trying to say there.
This would be if, if an employee is reclassified back to a position they held before the demotion, they would just go back to the minimum salary of that range? Or if they were above the minimum salary, they'd go back to whatever salary it was that they held at that time?
So your intention is, if you demoted them for whatever reason, then you put them back, they would go back to whatever salary they had previously, is what your intention?
Correct. And what this was, was I took the original section, these three sections out of the personnel policy, the last time it was adopted in 1995 by the board, and there had been some changes that had been made to it over the years that hadn't been ratified by the board, and this was one of those sections that was added in, so I included that as part of it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all the comments I had this morning.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matt, what if, what if someone was hired in, a new hire at a department head level, and they were being demoted? And they wanted to be demoted, they, let's say, say they, whatever reason, instead of termination, they were demoted to a staff-level position. They didn't have an opening salary. Would they go back to the salary range of that classification? Is what, what happened?
It'd be the minimum salary or whatever the range of the position was that they were being demoted into. So it'd be that beginning salary.
But it, it would have to be the minimum of that classification. It couldn't be, say the classification was from thirty to thirty-five thousand, and you would put them at thirty, when in fact, they could go to thirty-five.
Eventually, as part of the range, that's correct, but the way this reads is they'd be at, at the minimum, because earlier in the document, it says that, it's assumed that, the, the way that the pay ranges are supposed to work is, the minimum of the pay range is the expected pay range whenever we hire on employees. So that minimum range, and then everything from there on would be other incentives after hire.
Okay, that leads me to the next question. So you have a salary range, let's just say thirty to thirty-five, for lack of better words. You, even though you put the range out there, we try to hire in at the lower amount on every employee? Or why do we have a salary range then? Why don't we just say starting salary's gonna be thirty thousand? My point is this, what if, what if you wanna hire me? And I went, you know, it's gonna take you thirty-four, five to get me.
We pay more than what you're worth.
That, that is...
And he's my friend, too.
I think you left yourself open for that.
Blushy now, too.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't think I'm gonna touch that one.
So why did, I mean, because the department head has...
Part of the reason that, that we're asking to adjust this is because the way it had read before is that the administrator only had the authority to approve a hire at up to ten percent above the minimum salary range. What we've been having to do lately because of the job market is look at potential applicants for positions in that manner, in that the minimum is, is no longer able to hire people in at. And so that's why Mr. Suggs has been coming to the board with these, these new hires that we've been having, is because they are above that, that ten percent minimum. It's just put in this document that, under normal circumstances, and once we've adjusted our salary plan to be where the salary plan really should be with the minimum salaries, then the minimum salary should be, or in a, a proximate area of where you would expect to hire an employee at. But our salary plan hasn't been adjusted in so long that a lot of the minimum ranges just aren't, we're not able to hire employees on at the minimum range anymore.
Well, my case in point, I know I'm not worth thirty-four, five, I just figured that one out.
Well, you're probably worth a little more than that.
But, but I want you to have the leeway that, you know, you have a minimum and a maximum.
Yes.
And in negotiations, you find that person who is qualified. You might find a person that, you go, hey, we're gonna have to start you at minimum, you can work your way up. But you might find somebody who really desires to be here, is a great hire, you need to have that flexibility to go up to that maximum salary range.
And, and the changes in this document, and the changes that we've proposed, allow for that to occur.
And as long as you stay in budget, I'm fine with that.
Yes.
I'm more than fine. And as long as you stay in budget, I'm fine with that, I'm more than fine with that. So, you know, I don't think you need, I don't need to micromanage what you're doing, we need to set the parameters and say, now go out and do it.
Right, that, the overarching control is, is the budget amount, and that's why I tried to add that language, you know, time and time again in all of the different sections, that as long as. The personnel budget is not exceeded, then the county administrator has authority to, to do these things, because the board, uh, overall has the control over that budgetary amount.
But I never want someone to say, well, I hired someone in that light position at thirty thousand, how can I bring somebody else in at thirty-four, five? Well, they have more qualifications, they're a better hire. I want the administrator to have that flexibility and be able to do that, with the department head going, we really need to hire this guy. You tell the guy making thirty, hey, when you bust it and work hard and apply yourself, you're on the path to success here, folks. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Turner?
Or get a, a few more certifications or licenses or some qualification that, you know, that he has to meet, so that, yeah.
That's why I went to school and got mine, and that's why I'm up there a little bit more.
Okay. That's why you're worth more, that's right. Where do, where do we need to go here, is this the first reading of an ordinance, do we need to move forward, is this the amendment so we can just vote and pass it today, is that where we are?
If, if the board wishes so, this is a personnel policy, so this is just a, a normal policy that the board has adopted, and the board can adopt changes to it as needed in, in any meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we, uh, that we pass this or approve this with the language that I added to it earlier.
I second that motion.
Okay, we got a proper motion by Commissioner Turner, proper second by Commissioner Harvey, and we'll open it up for discussion, I'll start with Commissioner Rawls.
Got some comments, is there a conflict with the budget policy? Does this policy have a, okay, because you, you've, you've stricken several places, you've taken out within established budget policy. And you insert, as long as budget amount for personnel and the applicable fund is not exceeded.
Right.
Why, what, does that contradict the, the words within established budget policy?
No.
Why take it out then?
I put that in so that it was, it would be clear, instead of trying to incorporate an entire policy that might be changed. I figured it would be easier since the board as a whole sets the budgetary amount, just stick to the budgetary amount, since the board has already put that in place.
Oh, um. I, I, I just don't understand why you would take that out, it, the, the, the budget policy is what we set. But we're stricking that and we're putting in, as long as a budget amount for personnel in the established fund is not exceeded. So which fund would that be?
Where you add, yeah.
It's under section, uh, five point, the new five point oh three, item C.
Five point oh three, what page is it?
I don't have page numbers on mine.
Yeah, mine, I don't either.
It's just the, the last section is section five oh three.
It'd be like the last page, five point oh three.
While they're looking that up, we, we added, we're, we're coming in or adding numbers, we're starting off, um, I noticed that on the first one. You've, um, you got four point oh one classification, but then we, we've added, okay?
And, and that's because, the reason that the numbers have changed is because, like I said, I had to take the original, the, the last time this policy was adopted by the board, which was nineteen ninety-five. I took that original policy, and those were the numbers at that time. Over the years, this policy has been amended, some of those amendments went to the board, some of them did not go to the board. I, I didn't have time to go through and rewrite the personnel policy from ninety-five up until the last time it was officially amended by the board. There's been amendments since then that the board has not approved, so I wanted to use the original one that I knew the board had adopted, which was the nineteen ninety-five. But the one that we were, we currently have, has a lot more numbers in it, that's why the numbers have changed, so that's why you see the red line and the strike through that, and, and the numbers change. So that, that explains why, um, you'll see some of those changes in, in regards to that.
All right, exempt and non-exempt. Define?
Exempt employees are FLSA exempt employees, those employees who are salaried, not hourly.
All right, okay, that's what, that's what I figured. It, it seems to me like the language in the exempt is more generous than the non-exempt. When it comes to promotability, um, okay, so you can, for instance, um, without, and, and, and I'll just go on the record saying, I don't like the fact that we're. In any way usurping our authority to the county administrator, I think the board should have final say-so over this. But if he wants to give somebody a twenty-five percent pay raise, we're giving him that authority unilaterally, and he doesn't have to let us know.
As long as he's within the budget perimeter, and he can't spend more than twenty-five thousand dollars without approval from the chair, is that right or wrong?
This, this says he can set salaries, this doesn't have any.
And that is, that is part of the existing policy that's already in place, county administrator already has the authority to do that, these changes don't allow that or not allow that.
But, 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 but every, everywhere else in here is stricken with board approval. It's unilaterally the county administrator.
We just put it back in.
What you said was the county administrator and, and or the board, so he can do it, you've given him unilateral authority.
I agree, yeah.
Um, with, without having to bring it to the board ever. If we figured it out and we wanted to bring it up, we could, but my understanding of the motion is that, um, he has unilateral authority, or he can bring it to the board at his discretion.
But, but that's already in, in the policy, just to point that out, and that's something that, when I was reading through this policy, and this is not my attempt to completely rewrite this policy, I'll say that if I had more time.
But what's been, what's been redlined throughout this policy is with B O C C approval, that's been taken out.
The, the only changes that I was making to this document was as directed by the board, to allow him to make these changes as we're hiring on employees and doing these other things. I wasn't attempt, trying to attempt to fix the policy and put any other changes in it, if the board wants to see other changes, absolutely, happy to look at doing other changes as well.
I personally would like to see what we're approving, um, rather than handing that authority over to the county administrator. I think that we should have this come before us, um, you know, that this county's been handled. In a way that I wouldn't want to see it handled for decades. And I think that we, the, the commission needs to not micromanage everything that was tossed around at last meeting, but be involved in the decision-making process until we get this ship on the right course. I've, I've got a question here regarding, uh, and, and again, the, I don't, I don't know why. The, there's a disparity between the haves and the have-nots, so you're exempt and you're non-exempt, it just, um, when I, when I read that, I, I went this, this, and, and you're saying it's, it's currently there and.
That's right, that's the way the policy was currently written, and I don't know why it was that way either.
But we're exacerbating that by taking that ten percent limit off, and saying it can be more than ten percent. So, you know, I, I, can you give me an example of where you'd want to do that, or where that might be necessary?
We've had multiple department head positions right now, when the pay grade is, is set in a, a certain instance where when we've hired, uh, new department heads. Some of them sitting in the room currently, um, where we could not hire them within ten percent of the minimum salary range, county administrator didn't have the authority to change the salary range. And also, um, didn't have the authority to.
So what was the resolution?
Hire in, so, well, once we learned about this several weeks ago, it was bringing every single instance to the board for their approval.
What was the, what was the resolution to that, how did you get them hired?
We didn't, we weren't aware that, um, this had to, to come to the board.
I, I, I.
The, the current policy that we were working from, the copy that we have that is printed out right now, is a policy that was never taken to the board to be adopted. There were changes made to it, that the way it read was county administrator had the authority, when we found the nineteen ninety-five copy, and we found that the, not all of these changes had been brought to the board. We realized that the change to remove the ten percent had never been approved by the board, that's why we're bringing this to the board now.
The county administrator shall have the authority to make changes to the classification plan as necessary, period. No oversight.
That was the section that Commissioner Turner just said, or the board of county commissioners to approve?
No oversight.
But as, and also as long as it stays within budget?
This is section, no, it just says period, it's section four oh one, um, subsection D point three. It says the county administrator shall have the authority to make changes to the classification plan as necessary, period.
That was the section that Commissioner Turner just said he wanted the, the language added back in, and as well as it, as long as it stayed within budget. And I, I agree with those changes, that was just my oversight, I, I should have included it there, but I did not.
Now, this says changes to the classification plan, this is not talking about money, it's just, this is classification.
Yeah, the classification plan is the overall structure of all the positions of the county.
Right, not, but then, then beyond that, you have.
The salary plan that.
You're exempt and you're non-exempt salary plans, so, um, my concern here is, it says the county minister shall have the authority to make changes to the classification plan as necessary. That has nothing to do with salaries, the salaries comes later, so that's.
Correct.
I, I would, again, I, I would think that that should be followed up with, um, upon approval of the B O C C. We can, we, we can approve things, um, quickly, but this, this is the transparency that I'm looking for as a commissioner, that we be able to have, have in, input into what's happening. Y'all get it set, you bring it to the commission, we take a look at it, and you say, yes, this is well within your budget, or we're pushing the edge of the budget, or, you know, this, this is going to strain us, but we at least need to have that option to look at it. You, you've got, I, I see some of the typos, and I'm, I'm assuming that you've mashed together two policies here, is that why the, the typos are being corrected here, or they just, they were missing from the beginning? Cause you've, some of the word the, a.
Yeah, I, I tried to clean up little spelling issues as I found them, as I went through there, but the main goal of the changes I was making to it was to allow the county administrator to have the authority so that we. Didn't have to bring back every single hire that's over ten percent to the board. As well as, as you've mentioned, changes to the classification plan, that, you know, the number of positions if, uh, for example, public works, they want to. Transition one position into, uh, having different duties and responsibilities, this gives the administrator the authority to make that change to the classification plan.
Okay, under this, under the classification plan, H. You've stricken a personnel, a personal budget each fiscal year in accordance with the established budget and accounting procedure. But you added in the classification plan, so now it's going to read, all positions in the county are established and maintained through the classification plan. The establishment of the new or, of new or additional positions can be authorized. You've stricken only by the, the board of county commissioners, you've added in by, by county administrator.
We just added that back in, it says, now, now it reads by the board or the administrator.
But I'm, but again, that gives unilateral, they don't have to bring it back to the board if you say or. So I'm saying that I think the board really should maintain the oversight of this, because at the end of the day, no matter what, we're responsible. It, it, it doesn't matter what they do, we can't usurp or fail, and we're responsible for this, um, all in all, I, I disagree with.
It just depends at, at what level the board wishes to have oversight. The way this reads is you have oversight at the budget level, if, if you don't want us to spend more money, then you set the budget at one level, we can't exceed it. If you want to have oversight of both the budget and sign off on the positions, by all means, add that to the policy.
Let me ask you a question, all right? We'll talk about paramedics. Are we within budget on paramedics?
Right now, yes, because of attrition.
Okay, so because of attrition, we have, we have a, a really serious issue with being able to hire paramedics. This board has, it, it, under this policy would have no say-so under any changes beyond that. And we would just keep going down that road, but when it's brought to the board's attention, that, hey, you got guys that are being paid on a forty-hour week here on an ambulance, and E M Ts and, and paramedics are in a fire truck over here that are being paid on, on a fifty-six-hour week, week. One can't go to the other, and that, that's not what most counties do, um, I would venture to say we're probably the only county that does it our way. That would remain, and we would have no oversight on that whatsoever until the union files an unfetterly practice, or threatens to file, I'm, I'm not even sure what brought up the discussion at the last meeting about double time to incentivize them to sign up for overtime. I'm assuming that it was either the threat, or they, they filed an U L P, was there a U L P filed?
No.
Okay, was there a threat of one?
No.
They just said we're quitting, because what, what I'm hearing on the street is, we're fixing to lose more people. And we cannot afford to do that, we're losing not just seasoned people, but long-term people that have been here. So. This policy would not bring that to the board ever, it would all be handled in-house, in, in, in administration, and we would never be subject to that at all until, um, something like a U L P hits.
Nowhere in the policy states that it, that it doesn't have to come to the board, we're just trying to allow the administrator the authority to make changes as needed.
The old policy, what's, what's redlined through said with board approval, now we're taking that out.
Only by board approval, so any changes would have to come to, and, and that's what I'm asking, does the board want to have oversight at the budget level, when the budget is set? Or do you want to have control over both the budget and the positions?
I personally would say the budget and the positions until we get things figured out, because we're having a hard time hiring people. So. For the past couple of years you've been here, Matt, y'all have not figured out a way to get people hired, to get, to come to the commission and say, we need to make these adjustments. The opportunities have been there, we, we now are looking at a severe shortage in public works, a severe shortage in firing EMS, um, I believe general services is working short now. So I, I think the B O C C, um, should have oversight over this, at least for the time being. And, and we're not talking about a long lengthy conversation, it's, I think all the groups need, need to be, um, looked at. That's what I said the other day, I, I personally would not want to be in your position, um, if I worked for this county, I would be filing an unfetterly practice, because we're selectively negotiating with small groups of people that are may, maybe not being a bargaining unit. And we're not impact bargaining with the bargaining units as a result of that, so I think the B O C C really needs to have oversight over this until we get everything figured out at least.
Okay, all right, Commissioner, or Administrator Suggs wants to comment, and then we'll go to Commissioner.
I, I'll, I'll yield my time, Mr. Turner.
All right, we'll go to Commissioner Turner, then Commissioner Harvey.
I, I appreciate Mr. Rawls' stance on this, but I, uh, disagree with some of it, not all of it, but some of it. I think that this board's duty is to be fiduciarily responsible to the county, I will agree with you on that. But I also agree, I think that this board's duty is to set policy, and let staff work within that policy, to, to the biggest degree possible. This commissioner doesn't want to micromanage the government around here, I think that's what we hire people to do. What I want to make sure of is that, that we're there to support and we're, and that we're, and we can get involved whenever we want to. I think this clearly states by taking all that language, or not striking out the board of county commissioners along with the, uh, administrator, that it allows the board to get involved at whatever level they want to. I also agree and would hope that, uh, that staff would understand that if they decide to rewrite the whole flow chart for the whole county. That they would ask for B O C C approval of that, because it would not be good if they didn't. Even if they had, even if they had, that, well, no, I understand.
Not what you put in the policy.
Do what?
It's not what's in the policy.
I understand that.
You have it both ways.
But it says they can, it doesn't say they can't bring it to us, it doesn't say they can, it's kind of like our purchasing policy. They can spend X amount of dollars by theirself, they can spend X amount if the chair goes along, but either one of them at any different time can say, whoop, that one's going to go to the board, because I don't feel comfortable about it. And I would hope that this policy would end up being the same way, because if the board always has the right, when they find out, or it hadn't been done to their ability or whatever, bring it back to the board, they can put it on the agenda and bring it back to the board. I just don't need, personally, I just don't think that I need to hamstring or micromanage the county around here, I mean, what do they want me to do next, just go in and be the deputy county administrator? That's not my job, my job is sit up here and make policy, and let them work within the policy. So, Mr. Chairman, my motion stands, um, as, as presented.
Okay, all right, thank you, Commissioner Turner, Commissioner Harvey?
I, I, I'm done, I yield my time, I think Commissioner Turner kind of echoed my sentiments exactly.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
Just so we're clear, I stand opposed to the way this is written, and for the reason that you gave, you said, when, when we figure it out, or, or when it comes to our attention. I'm not willing to sit back and wait until the wheels are coming off the train before somebody comes in and says, we have a problem. I really think that it's our fiduciary responsibility to, uh, not only to the taxpayers, but also to our, uh, our employees. To be diligent and to manage this, this, uh, county and its budget, and the employees, um, and not usurp that authority, I, I just, I think that's ours, that's our responsibility and ours alone, but. I just, I think that's ours, that's our responsibility, and ours alone, but-
Call for questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we got a proper motion on the floor by Commissioner Turner with the corrections to that, Matt. You got those? Who seconded it? We got a proper second by Commissioner Harvey. All in favor in the committee, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign?
Aye.
Okay. Four to one with Commissioner Rawls dissenting.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. That will conclude my comments from today, with the exception of this one.
I would hope so.
I want to say thank you to the Board of County Commissioners, and I personally stayed out of the discussion today for a reason. I think it's a discussion that needed to be had at the board level, but I do thank you for your support and your belief in the process in itself. And if anyone thinks that we're not being transparent, I would be more than happy to sit down with them at any time and have that conversation. I believe the record speaks for itself on how we do business around here, and I would respectfully disagree. I think the ship is getting rid of by the five Board of County Commissioners having great input in what the administration and staff is doing here. So I thank you again for your support.
Okay, thank you, Administrator Suggs. County Attorney, Mr. Joe De novo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have, this is a difficult thing for me to discuss. I wanted to kind of publicly announce that I will be resigning my position as county attorney. I had a unique situation, personal situation, where I'm going to be taking a position as a county attorney in Monroe County. I have a home down there. I've had a home for 20 years in the area, and it was a personal decision on my part. But I do want to underscore just what a privilege and pleasure it has been to serve this county and, and the board and the administration. I, I, this, like I said, is no reflection on how I feel about this county and, and the citizens that you serve. Everybody has been incredibly kind and welcoming to me when I arrived, and at the time that I have been here, and of course, we were challenged by a natural disaster, and that really underscored just the quality of people in this community, this board, the administration, and all of the staff. And to see it firsthand, when we were called upon to respond to a natural disaster, is, was just something that I'll carry with me the rest of my life. It is, was, like I said, a very, very difficult decision on my part. I, I wasn't necessarily seeking the position, there would be no other position I would even consider leaving this, this position for. However, there's, you know, in light of, especially in light of Hurricane Irma, there are matters that I have to tend to down there. And when this position came up, I felt, you know, on a personal level, it was necessary that I at least consider it, and, but I, it's not with, not a small amount of, you know, sadness that, that I announced that I'm leaving. I can't say enough about this community. Everybody has been wonderful, and it's just was kind of a personal decision that I decided was probably the best to make. So, I want to thank you all for the opportunity. It was a wonderful experience, and, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, it wasn't longer, but I, like I said, it's no reflection on this community at all. It has to do with, with kind of my personal situation, and the opportunity to return to Monroe County. So, thank you all for the opportunity.
I just appreciate the fact you didn't say you were leaving because I named the lawyer Joe.
No, that was probably a reason for me staying, you know?
Well, Joe, thank you for the service to the county, and we sure hate that you are leaving, so, and we wish you the best, and, and it is okay if you get down to Monroe County in your new job, and you say, "You know what? I learned a new language, San Mateo."
It's always good to be multilingual.
It is. Okay, commissioners? We'll start with Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to say to Lawyer Joe how much I appreciated you since you've been here and your time. I will miss the three-page dissertation of my simple question. I will say that, but-
Three, is all you got?
Yes.
About 59.
But I can tell, I will say this, that you were thorough when you answered the question, and didn't always agree with the answer. You and I would debate at times, as we should debate, but I always respected your opinion, and I look, wish you well in the future, and maybe we'll see you down there in Monroe County one day. Do want to thank all the veterans that served our country. It's, it's very important that we man those front lines, and yesterday was a day of honoring people, but we shouldn't just stop on one day, we should do it every day. And I really appreciate our veterans, and want to say that. Want to follow up with something that we had you asked me to do. Kevin and I have a meeting coming up on, I think it's Monday, the 25th, for the ILE lots, the 11 of the 47. The, we did find out that the anomaly over in East Palaca, that one lot, is an anomaly. That's the only time that's happened. So we'll be bringing you a list of the 11, and the plan for those 11, and I think Tabitha's going to send us out on another mission about some other properties that we own. We did find out that some of these were just lake bottoms and things, so really didn't mean a whole lot. But we do know that there's money in there. When Commissioner Dersher, years ago, got ILE to donate those properties, sell some of those properties off, it was for, and the money was put into a fund to take care of those properties. So we're going to be coming back to you, as you requested, to give you an update of every piece of property, and what the management plan of those properties are, and we look forward to that. The other thing, I have followed up with FDOT about the meeting, moving the monies from Fort Gates over to any other projects that we might have. I've gotten no response, but I'll be up at FDOT tomorrow for a transportation summit in Lake City, where I'll be asking that same question again. And then on Thursday, I'll be in Marion County with Small County Coalition and FAC at a Transportation Element Plan Meeting, Vision Element Plan Meeting. So, next two days, I'll be fully indoctrinated in FDOT, road building, and things in that nature. Do want to shout out to WHIF, we cook turkey legs, Commissioner Goddard and I did the other day, and your wife, actually, Commissioner Rawls, came out and bought a bunch of them. And we had a great time with their turkey truck coming up. That was their promotional thing, but it was really fun to get out there and cook turkey legs. Like I said, if you smell smoke in Putnam County, it's probably me or one of our commissioners cooking somewhere and doing something. I do want to end on this note, though. It is a great community, full of pride, Putnam County is, and full of volunteerism. And it's just warms my heart to look around this county and see all the good things that good people are doing. And just because you might not see them out on the front lines, doesn't mean it's not being done behind the scenes, you know? The deputy this morning, that's a, that's a normal reaction to go, well, this gentleman needs some food. Who can I, who can I put this off on? What agency would help him? But he didn't do that. He went and bought the food, and people found out. And that's the community we live in, that's Putnam County. We're going to debate, we're going to disagree, and we're going to move forward as a county. And Putnam County's best days are ahead of us. I can tell you, in the past five years, I've seen changes come that I am so excited about. And now it's time to start implementing those, and we are, and it's just an honor to serve with you five, four other people. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Commissioner Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd also like to join with Commissioner Harvey in thanking the veterans for their service. I had the opportunity to ride in the parade yesterday, and I appreciate them for that. The, I just want to remind everybody in the public that if, that are going to watch this, that we're in the process, along with the visioning sessions and the strategic planning and what have you, we're also in the process of rewriting our comprehensive plan, or amending our comprehensive plan. And so, once it gets done, the staff in-house is going to rewrite our land development code to match the new comprehensive plan. And so, this is a really big thing for Putnam County, and it gives us the opportunity to make sure that we keep cautions in place on zoning issues and, and different environmental issues, while still allowing for things to be done that would maybe make Putnam County a little more user-friendly than what it has been in the past. During this time that we're rewriting our comprehensive plan and our land development code, and we're also going through the strategic planning process, I would like to challenge some of our employees in Putnam County to, to come up with, help us come up with suggestions and recommendations to help make Putnam County more user-friendly when they come in, that we can set in this, that we can build into this process. I certainly don't want to open it up to the point to where we start building pigpens by the courthouse, and that's probably a terrible analogy, but, and more extreme than it would ever get. So I do want the safety still built in. But at the same time, we want to promote economic development, and we want to, to make the, the process as user-friendly as we can. I know that when we talk about it, and to people from other counties, sometimes people say, "Well, I won't work in Putnam County anymore because of this." But there, we also have people in our county that says, "I won't work in St. John's or Clay or whatever for the same reason." So, like I said, I'd just like to challenge this morning to maybe come up with, with ways to make it easier, to be more user-friendly. And with that, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Commissioner Rawls?
I was in the parade yesterday with Commissioner Turner as well, and it was very well-attended. The city plac did a terrific job in the American Legion getting this thing put on. You know, Commissioner Harvey's right, we're going to have our debates, we're going to have our disagreements. And, you know, there was Rusty Starr putting in the newspaper one time that there was on, there's not a conspiracy on every rock, but I really do believe that at the juncture that we're in right now, we're in here for a reason. The problems that we're having as a community need to be, need to be aired out, so the public understands what issues we're facing and the concerns that we have as commissioners, as employees of the county, from a budget perspective, from a monetary perspective. The more that we can get out to the public, the better off we are. So, this commission feels like complete transparency is the way to go. I think that oversight by this commission is imperative. I understand my fiduciary responsibility, I have a duty to act when things come up, when they're put in front of us. We can't turn a blind eye, we can't tell somebody else to deal with it. And we are facing a litany of situations right now as a commission that we have to deal with. So, I, I do enjoy serving up here with you guys, I really enjoy the debate. One of my favorite building officials had a sign in his office, and it said, "Arguing with the building officials is like wrestling with a pig in mud. Eventually, you realize the pig likes the mud. This pig likes the mud." So, but, you know, in all seriousness, we are, Commissioner Turner's right, we do have a really good county, and we're getting things figured out. You know, I hear complaints every day about our building department, and what I'm telling people is, no, the problem is, is you're used to doing it the wrong way, now we're doing it the right way, and it's going to take a little more effort, and at the end of the day, we're a lot more professional. Our inspectors are a lot, a lot more attentive, and so I, I agree with him. I would rather work here than work in St. John's County or Duval County.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Rawls. Commissioner Goddard?
Well, I want to put in that, on all these issues where we've had, where a complaint has come in, I know that I can take that person, take them over there to staff, and this thing gets worked out. So, and it's worked out towards what the people want. And like you said, sometimes it's because they were used to doing it the wrong way. And, but, but I'm very impressed with the way our, our staff is working. Yeah, we still have a few little problems to work out, but our county is moving very well, excellently, actually. And I'm going to go back to the parades. Bill and I had the opportunity, Mr. Pickens had the opportunity to go down to the parade, Veterans Parade in Crescent City, and that was great. It wasn't as big as what happened here in Putnam, or in Palaca, but it was well-attended. A lot of people were there, Bill got to throw a lot of candy out. What we didn't eat in the car, but it was, it was good. And, and then I was out of town, I've been out of town here lately, and I was out of town again yesterday. But getting to see everything on Facebook, and I know Facebook seems to be king in our county, but everybody was having a blast yesterday at that parade. I don't know how many people were there, but it, all you could see was people everywhere having a great time.
Well, it's-
It was, it was great. And I always encourage people, get out and see Putnam County. We, if, when you're not sure about what a beautiful county we have, go stand down there on the river and watch that sunrise in the morning. I mean, we live in a beautiful spot. We can be anywhere we need to be in a short period of time, and if there's a, any kind of problem, we pull together. We might not agree, but when there's a problem, we pull together. And it's just, I've had the opportunity, I could not wait to leave here, I'll be honest with you. When I was a young man, I did not want to live here. And my wife wore me out to get back down here. But I had the opportunity to live elsewhere and see what we have here is special. And if we don't take advantage of it, you're going to lose it. We have something very special here in Putnam County, and we should be very, and we should be out here every day going, "Oh, my gosh, it's so great to live here in Putnam County." Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Goddard. I also want to thank you to all the veterans, and did participate in the parade in Crescent City with Commissioner Goddard, and, and the VFW had a, the Junior ROTC do a program at the park after the parade, and some other activities, and I thank the VFW and Junior ROTC. And also, the Junior ROTC held their 12th Annual Veterans Ceremony Friday afternoon, and my wife and I attended, and it was really special to see those young cadets go through the ceremony, the folding of the flag, and explaining of each fold. They had the VFW sponsored Democracy, Voice of Democracy winners there, and they gave their speeches, and the band played quite a few numbers, and so it was really, really a special event. And also, Monday, I attended, the Crescent City Women's Club held their second annual prayer breakfast for, to honor the veterans, and about 50 people in attendance there, and I want to thank the Crescent City Women's Club for honoring our local veterans with a breakfast. And last, but not least, Kevin, can I put you on the spot to come up and mention about the Saturday event for the ribbon cutting for the Tanglewild Park?
Thank you for that, Mr. Chairman. I was fixing to bring it back up. I ordered that Northern Steel Commissioner, Raul's Thunder, Casey Williams to bring it up.
Okay.
Yes, sir. We finally closed out the Tanglewild grant that we've been working on for a few years on the property that we have, and we're going to have an actual ribbon cutting ceremony, an opening ceremony, partnering with Putnam Blueways and Trails, they're going to be out there also. It's going to start at 2:00 this Saturday afternoon, out on the property, have a ribbon cutting, a few speakers, yourself, of course, lined up. Commissioner Rawls, I was going to talk to you after this meeting about that as well.
It's on the calendar.
Yes, sir. And then the, the Blueways and Trails have a few events lined up where they're going to be bringing some potluck-type foods, and then I think they're going to have also some canoe and kayaking set up as well.
Okay. All right, thank you, look forward to that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Kevin. Okay, that's all my comments. Any further business come before this commission? We stand adjourned.